Let's call the meeting to order. Did I get the town clerk?
They are. Board of Aldermen's meeting minutes, town clerk. November the first, twenty twenty-one, the agenda session minutes. November ninth, twenty twenty-one, regular meeting minutes. That'll be certified the abstract of votes.
Objection, we'll leave those on the consent agenda. A R P budget account. Management, Mr. Roger.
I'm having technical issues as well here. This past spring, when we were notified that we were recipients of funding through the American Recovery Plan Act. So we had you set up an account to segregate that money because we knew we were going to have to do that. We set up as a designated revenue account. It turns out the advice we've got from the state is that should be set up as a grant fund account as opposed to revenue account. So we're just going to ask you to change the type of account, how it's labeled. That changes when it rolls over, when it expires, that kind of thing. So this money will go in there and it'll sit there until it's spent. That's, that's, like I said, it's just a technical change that we need to make.
Any questions from board members? If not, we'll leave that on the regular agenda. Purchase of Hager parcel.
In your packets, there was a draft budget amendment. And what this does is allocates funding from our undesignated fund balance. Eighty-five thousand dollars. And we will use to purchase the property on Hager that we've talked about. And we put an offer on, it was accepted. We were ready to purchase, so budget change. And authorize manager to do all the paperwork to complete that transaction. That's something we'd actually look for a vote tonight so that we can close later this week.
Any questions? Board member? We have a motion to approve. We have a second. In discussion. Something to our mayor protein. I step down front if you don't mind. Proclamation to recognize Davis Montgomery, Alderman Mayor of Proton. Whereas Davis Montgomery has served the town of Elon as an Alderman for four terms, two oh five to nineteen, twenty nineteen. And Mayor Proton from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one. Whereas the performance of his duties and responsibilities as Mayor Proton, Alderman Recreation and Parks Commission, Budget Committee, Personnel Committee, Downtown Advisory Board, and Town Representatives on the Burlington Graham Metropolitan Planning Organization, Transportation Advisory Committee, and working relationship were always characterized by obvious dedication in getting the job done and well. Whereas he will be missed both professionally and as a friend. And now therefore be it resolved that the Elon Board of Aldermen is hereby convey on him our heartfelt appreciation, commendation for his service, and exemplary spirit that he has exhibited in carrying out his duty for the town of Elon. Be it further reserved by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor. And on behalf of our governing body and our citizens, I do hereby tender this proclamation to Davis Montgomery, extending our best wishes to him and his family for much success and happiness in the future. We extend our sincere gratitude for his outstanding performance of duty.
Will you sit down? Party gift from the town. Honoring your service here. And. Honor your service here. Turn off the camera.
Thank you.
And.
Oh, very nice.
Your own framed copy of Downtown Elon?
That's past Elon, that's not future Elon, right?
I hope it's not future. I hope I don't screw things up that badly.
Just an extension of downtown, Rich.
Right, right, that's the next block.
But once again. Real quick, very humbling, very thoughtful, appreciate it very much, thank you. Part of our agenda, we're going to take a moment to recognize. If you'll step down front for us, please. Had a chance to see Mayor Tully's background and have been, had the chance to work with him sometime in some regard over the years. So many different positions and so many different places in our community. We talked about the uniqueness and Senator Gailey was talking about tonight. They have thirty years of service to the community these days. It's just something that you just don't hear about. And the depth of it and the extent of it has been very much appreciated. So very, very honestly, we'd like to say tonight, we want to recognize the mayor in a very unique way. And that'll be by naming the building, the town hall as the, I mean, I get the exact term. I don't know how many letters we get budgeted for, so it may be. It may be the Mayor Jerry Tully, Town of Elon Administrative Building, or something very close to that. The main thing is it's going to be a lasting tribute to the service that you give to this town mayor. It's not enough, but it's at least that we. We'll take the form of a brass plaque that will be installed on the outside of the building as soon as we kind of get to it in. And once again, we'll let everybody know when that takes place.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. I'm going away, Mr. Mayor.
Did you tell me that you've been mayor for thirty-eight years? You've been with the town of Elon for thirty-eight years? So I had to get out the calculator, so that was nineteen eighty-three, I think, when you started. And I was a sophomore in high school at Western Alamance High School. And I could never ever imagine that the future would carry me forward to this place where I get to honor this gentleman in this moment. It was the town of Elon College at that time, right? Started out with Elon College and we've seen the changes over the years. Just the growth in the, in the town, I think, really speaks to your leadership and how people see this as a desirable place to live and to work. And really, I can't imagine what it's, what it will look like without you steering the ship. It's just amazing. So I have, we have a couple of presentations. If I haven't met you, I'm Senator Amy Gailey. And this is the Order of the Long Leaf Pine. Which I was thrilled to be one of the letters of recommendation for you to receive this award. I believe you've received it in the past, is that right? So you get a special pin that goes along with it. As this is part two for you because your career has been so long and been so distinguished and productive. An example for all of us. If you don't know about the Order of the Long Leaf Pine, this is the highest honor that the state of North Carolina can award one of its citizens. It's been bestowed upon people such as Andy Griffith, Billy Graham, Dean Smith, who was a basketball coach. Don't remember him. And Michael Jordan and many other distinguished North Carolina citizens. And so I'm just so humbled and honored to be able to present this to really the greatest citizen of the town of Elon.
Thank you.
And a great North Carolinian.
Appreciate it so much.
Thank you, my name is Dennis Riddell. It's my privilege to be the House of Representatives, representative for Elon and District sixty-four. So Amy and I served together in Raleigh. And it's my privilege tonight to make several presentations. The first one comes to you from Congressman Ted Budd. And his office had a United States flag flown over the Capitol Building for you. It's here and a certificate to that extent. Thank you, said it's for you. This will be from Amy and I both, even though it's my register. This is one of those bittersweet moments that I think are inevitable in a long life well lived. I'd like to be, now this. North Carolina General Assembly. This North Carolina flag was flown over the state Capitol Building in Raleigh, North Carolina in honor of Mayor Jerry Tully. In recognition, in recognition of and with appreciation for thirty-eight years of selfless service to the people of the town of Elon, Elon University, and the citizens of Alamance County. Love you, and we say with heartfelt thanks.
Good evening, my name is Sam Schumate. I'm here on behalf of Elon Congressman Ted Budd. Sorry that I'm covered in dust, I was down the road in Liberty for the Toyota announcement. And it was real windy down there today. But this is a congressional record. It's a program that started in the United States House of Representatives back in eighteen seventy-three. It's a permanent record. And my boss, you know, this is a pretty big deal within our office. I've been with him for four years now and he doesn't do these just left and right. You know, they're really for special individuals or businesses or things that really catch his eye in his district. And, you know, although he's only represented Alamance County since January, you know, learning about the service and all the lives that Mayor Tully has touched during his public service here. The community of Elon definitely stood out to him. So in October, he had this done and I'll just read it real quick on his behalf. Madam Speaker, I rise today to congratulate Mayor Jerry Tully of Elon, North Carolina, on his completion of nearly four decades of public service. Mayor Tully's life's work is characterized by service, always investing his time in the lives of others. Tully worked in multiple positions at Elon University for thirty-one years preceding his mayorship. His work at Elon included time as the university's head football coach, during which Tully amassed an impressive winning record, led the team to two back-to-back N A I A championships in eighty and eighty-one. Resident of the Elon community since nineteen sixty-seven, Jerry Tully entered public service upon appointment to the town of Elon's Appearance Commission in nineteen eighty. After his initial term of three years, Tully ran for the office of Alderman and won election. He served as Alderman for six years before being elected as mayor in nineteen eighty-nine. Mayor Tully served his term and then accepted appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission, where he served for four years before resuming his post as mayor after being elected in two thousand and five. Under Mayor Tully's leadership, Elon has been consistently ranked as one of the safest and best places to live in North Carolina. Jerry Tully has been a stalwart of the community through it all, demonstrating integrity throughout the entirety of his tenure and leadership and proving himself fully deserving of the public trust. As he retires, Mayor Tully is supported by his wife, Joni, their two sons, and his grandchildren. I'm beyond grateful for Mayor Tully's dedication to a community that we both care so deeply for. And I wish him only happiness in the years to come. Madam Speaker, please join me today in celebrating the career of Mayor Jerry Tully and in honoring his service to people of Elon.
Not done yet. First, from Senator Tillis's office, they sent this in for you. Dear Mayor Tully, we should extend my sincerest congratulations to you on your well-deserved retirement. Susan and I are pleased to join your family, friends, and colleagues in recognizing the twenty-four years of service with the town of Elon. Your career has exemplified the highest standard of leadership, effectiveness, and professionalism. And thank you for your valued service in our state. We wish you all the best for happiness and good health in the years ahead. May God bless you and your family, sincerely, Tom Tillis.
Thank you.
I'm breaking it. Down. Years of service nineteen eighty-three to ninety-seven and two thousand and five to twenty-one. Senator Mayor Jerry Tully for your outstanding dedication and many years of service to the town of Elon. One last one. And the town of Elon print as well. Appreciate that very much.
If I can make some very brief remarks. It's been a pleasure to serve this community over the last thirty-eight years. Things I've recognized. Outstanding town staff. It made it very easy to be the mayor of the town of Elon. Came involved in the Appearance Commission. I was sitting at home when I lived over at Hope Street and went to Hope and West College. And I got a call from the end managers. Appearance Commission, which I did. And later I served on the board, became mayor, and really appreciated all that. I appreciate all the board members I've served with. When I was counting up, I think it was twenty-two I would have served. There's been four town managers, there's been four chief of police. It's just been an honor for me to serve this town. And don't know what the future holds, but as I told Mr. Roger, I don't know if I'd be coming to town hall all the time. But listen again, thank you for everything. Excited on the agenda, public comments. Are there any citizens in house here or online who would like to make any comments to this board about their wishes or concerns for the town? We'll close the public comment section. Now, where are we next? Those?
I, Emily Sharp.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Then I will support.
That I will support.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of North Carolina.
Of the state of North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I.
I, Emily Sharp.
Do further swear.
Do further swear.
That I will execute.
That I will execute.
The duties of mayor.
The duties of mayor.
For the town of Elon.
For the town of Elon. Carolina.
According to.
According to.
The best of my skills.
The best of my skills.
And ability.
And ability.
Yeah, according to law.
According to law. So help me God.
We will now be swearing in Stephanie Borland.
I, Stephanie E. Borland.
I, Stephanie E. Borland.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of North Carolina.
And the Constitution of the state of North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Stephanie E. Borland.
I, Stephanie E. Borland.
Further swear.
Do further swear.
That I will execute the duties.
That I will execute the duties.
Of Alderman.
Of Alderman.
For the town of Elon, North Carolina.
For the town of Elon, North Carolina.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
And ability.
And ability.
According to law.
According to law. So help me God.
When else, we're in Randy Orway.
I, Randall Lee Orway.
I, Randall Lee Orway.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of North Carolina.
Constitution of the state of North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Randall Lee Orway.
I, Randall Lee Orway.
Do further swear.
Do further swear.
That I will execute the duties.
That I will execute the duties.
Of Alderman. For the town of Elon, North Carolina.
For the town of Elon, North Carolina.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my skill and ability.
Of my skill and ability.
According to law. So help me God.
So help me.
Do I have to call recess? Or does Mayor Tully? So we will now recess for a brief reception and we will return in just, I don't know, thirty minutes or so after that.
So we will now recess for a brief reception, and we will return in just, I don't know, 30 minutes or so after that.